Alright, so we'll call the meeting to order at 5:30. First, we're gonna go to public comment.
I don't have anything right now.
You don't have anything right now? Okay, so we'll reserve it for until 6 o'clock. So just raise your hand and let me know if you have anything. Okay, announcements?
No announcements from the SAU office, any announcements?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, so business and financials, financial review. Hi there.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So in your board tax, we sent you your first financial for the year. Right now, we are showing remaining budget of $189,227.62. So there are some things that have happened in this budget. We did have five teachers track. So there are a couple of, you'll notice a couple of the teacher lines are over budget because of that track. The other thing you might notice is that the, and we're in the process of changing it, the regular ed shows that there's still budget remaining, but the special ed line is over budget. It's because we're one of the people we need to move to the other line. So, and then, so the next financial bill will be pretty much.
Awesome, okay.
Does anyone have any questions on any of the other lines?
Uh, well, you answered a few of the questions already.
Okay.
Uh, the other question that I saw was the maintenance line. Repair and maintenance line. Looked like we had already used, um, a chunk of that, so I just didn't know if there was anything like unexpected or something that was planned or...
Nothing unexpected. How much, how much?
Um, let's see.
Is that the fence maybe?
No, we haven't, we haven't done that yet.
Uh, the, the back fence. That we needed to put for reimbursement from insurance.
Right.
Not sure if that happened yet.
I think, are we waiting for the other half back?
And we were sharing the cost with, uh, the rec.
Oh, that's right.
Insurance, and us recovering a third.
Okay, so some of that will come back.
So we have the insurance money back, I think we're waiting for the rec.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, I just was like, oh, okay, so that explains that line. Do you have any other questions?
I just, I have one, and it's, it's more an observation, and I just need to, maybe Brandon can help with this.
Yeah.
But it says under textbooks that we're, we were down negative 47%. What's that? Like, did we order a lot of stuff? Did we order a lot of textbooks? So if you look, um...
What page?
It's right, it's under, um, halfway in the first, first group. Uh, regular instructional textbooks. And percentage in budget is negative 47.48%.
Right, so it's over budget 3,000.
You spent 9,000 and you budgeted 6,500.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. I could see that. I forgot.
I ready is through that line.
Okay.
So I need to check on why we're over.
I mean, just that, that seems like a lot over. I mean, I get that it might be over, but why is it a lot over? So, just an observation.
Yep.
I can check and see what was charged there.
Okay.
The one thing that, I was wondering when I saw that line, 'cause I did see that, um, so thank you for bringing that up. Did we order like vocab books or something?
We ordered, um, we ordered writing books for K through 2, um, but that shouldn't have come out of that line, so we, we need to check on what came out of there.
What was charged to that line?
Yeah.
Writing K through 2.
And just, can I ask another observation question? In the same group, um, it said summer literacy. We were over budget by over a thousand dollars. We were at negative 8.45.
That's a salary, isn't it?
What happened there, that's all. Again, ma- maybe we had to, but I'm just asking like why?
It's a 501, I think it's salary.
This is, it's a salary.
Okay.
But if you look under the next, like paragraph, under 1210, the second line says ESY summer program stipends. So that is under budget by 5,500 dollars. A lot of times when the stuff comes over in the summer, the correct codes are not necessarily on, on the items to pay, so it could just be a swap between the two lines.
Okay, okay.
We budget separately, but it's all one program.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I don't see anything big in these manifests, um, but yeah, we'll give that info.
And the fuel natural gas line, is that 'cause the cost of fuel went up? That's like showing mega over 30%. There's on the second to last budget page.
I think, I think what they did is they encumbered the usage for last year.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we kept that amount of money in the check in the budget. Right. What we do is, is every month, I mean, you probably won't see much change in, probably until January, when we get a feel for what the invoices are as they start coming.
Coming in.
Got it.
And at the beginning of the year, we encumber a lot of funds for things that we know we're going to use.
To use, yeah.
That we care and not having to do it every month.
Yep.
Yeah, so if we could get clarification on that line item for textbooks, like, I guess, invoices, vendors, and that just, if we could all get that in email. Do you guys have anything else for financials?
Um, I do, again, just for learning sake. Summer institute stipends, you're paying teachers their, their time for being in professional learning opportunities.
Correct.
Um, but we're under by 33% or over by 33%. So, like, and it just, if we have a, if we had a, a balance of seven grand, did we add someone to professional learning, right, so that would've swayed that off?
No.
So that's on page 2. Yeah, um, I don't know, halfway down the page. And we're at negative 33%.
Oh, is it the summer institute stipends?
Yeah, right, so for professional learning, yep. And, and so, I get it, like, we're paying the teachers to, to, to promote their skills and build capacity, but, like, we should know that number going in? And that's why, did we add someone that maybe we didn't know, or how did that, like, why did that happen? That's all.
Well, it's down 33%.
Well, we're over budget.
We're over budget. So just something to, to, you know, who knows what happened? Should, doesn't need to, that, that's an area that doesn't...
I must be looking at the wrong one, the summer institute stipends?
Yeah.
Yep.
We budgeted 11,000. Year to date is 3,962. The balance is 7,000. Incumbrance is 10.
Right.
So how?
So how are we negative?
Yeah, how do we go?
Right. Are we over budget?
So you encumbered too much.
Right. So we have 11, we've spent basically 4.
4, yep.
Which is, which was 7, but we've encumbered 10, 6.
Yeah, I wonder why.
So we've over encumbered that, so maybe we need, just need to look at what is in that encumbrance.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We can look at that line.
Yeah.
And we budget that in, Brandon, right?
Yeah.
For a certain number of staff.
Certain number of staff, and they get a particular amount of money for their professional learning.
Right.
So that's a, that's a number we know.
Yeah.
Sometimes more of your staff wanna go than we budget for.
I don't think that happens.
But that didn't happen.
Okay. It's just a number we should, we can kinda know.
We pretty much, yeah, we pretty much know. And we know what the three days are gonna be like, 'cause it's organized by the SAU, it's not.
Okay, good questions. Alright, did we have anything else for that?
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Approval of minutes. So we just have our public minutes from September 9. The only thing that I saw that I wanted to add for the record was, uh, Ms. DeBro asked if the state reading assessment scores were back yet before my comment. That speaks to that subject. Do you have any other edits?
No, I've, uh...
No?
None of mine, no.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended for September 9. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, principals report.
Thank you. We have, uh, our student-led fall conferences coming up, K through 5. Uh, we have one evening from 3:30 to 6:30 on the 29th of October, and then again November 5, until 30 to 3:30. Our enrollment numbers, uh, as of this report, maintain a low weight, 15 kindergarten, 18 first grade, 24 second grade, 23rd graders, 10 4th graders, 21 5th graders. Community events opened up our year, we had, uh, another wonderful turnout. Over 90, 90% of our families participated in our family open house. And, uh, we want to definitely get the word out there that our, our PTO, uh, Fall fundraiser, Fall Festival, their biggest fundraiser, of the school year is, uh, coming up on the 20th of October, 3 to 6 p.m., here at the school. Uh, last year, uh, we included the special education data report, and it's gonna be very similar this year to the information that you're gonna hear. Uh, we maintained our, our special education staff to specialized teachers, also slash case managers, they provide specialized instruction, they provide consultation services, they do referrals, evaluations, they write IEPs, and they participate in our student-teacher assistance team. Uh, one full-time speech pathologist, she is a speech and language service provider. She also case manages any students that are speech and language only and all preschool students. She, she participates in our tier 2 intervention team. She provides consult to students and participates on our student-teacher assistance team, and is also our Medicaid coordinator for the school. School counselor, uh, she is, um, a tier 1 service for all students, even though, you know, she's not a special educator entitled. She is highly involved in our special ed team. Uh, she provides second step social most curriculum to all students K through 5. She's our 504 coordinator and, um, is our tier 2 and 3 coordinator for our school, providing interventions, and is also a participant on our student-teacher assistance team. Those are all the full-time staff, part-time staff. Uh, we consult with our board-certified behavior analyst, the PCBA. She's here two days a week. She creates functional behavior analysis and behavior plans. She supervises, um, any RBTs that we would have in the building. We don't have any currently, but, uh, they have supervised RBTs in the past. She provides direct services to students, uh, who need those services in their IEPs, and also provides consult to staff. Our occupational therapist, we contract with, uh, three days a week. She provides OT services to students with IEPs and 504s. She's a participant on our student-teacher assistance team. She provides, uh, tier 1 support in some of our lower grade levels, especially in the area of writing, and she provides consult to staff. Physical therapist that we have is here less than one day a week. Uh, we contract with her also with the SAU. She provides physical therapy services and provides consult. The school psychologist we also contract with, he does our special education evaluations and participates in the IEP process. All of our special ed staff, um, minus the school counselor, they are, Fort Gillingham trained, and, uh, that includes the specialty teachers, the speech and language pathologist, and in addition to all of our K through 3 classroom teachers. Uh, currently, we have 28 students that have, that have IEPs in our school. Uh, we have three students in the special referral process. And we have four students that, um, are identified with a disability that we provide services to, either in the preschool setting or attending charter schools. Uh, which, for us, 25, just over 25% of our population is identified, uh, with a disability. Our average group size is, you know, around three students. Uh, we're, we're providing both push-in and pull-out services, and there's consistent progress monitoring going on while throughout the year. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, you said that your two special ed teachers are OG-trained.
Yes.
Is there any, uh, future plans on getting them certified?
We have, uh, one staff member going through the certification process as of last week.
Okay.
So she, uh, she will be trained, um, hopefully in the, in the next year or two.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, sorry.
Certified.
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 Which would then be able to train any staff we have in the building.
There we go, right, so it's the trainer.
Yeah.
Yep, favorite.
And we're using, we're using, um, Title II funds.
To, to, to do that, right, for professional learning?
Yeah.
Um, the, the second piece is the push-in-push-out model, right? So kids are being, um, serviced out of the classroom and in the classroom.
Yes.
Um, is this the first year you've done that?
No.
No?
Uh, it's, it's really specific to the individual student.
Okay.
Our goals are to do more push-in.
Okay.
With, uh, those students that it works for.
Works for, yep. I'm just curious if there's any data, or if you've ever collected data on the significance of, um, their progress in the classroom and with kids out of the classroom. Well, if there was a, if there, if there's, if there is a significance, one, it's based on the fit of the kid and what the kid needs, and I get that. But, um, I'm just curious if the push-in had a significant jump because they were with their peers, or they were, or is there a significant jump because they're not with their peers and they're being taken out, and there's focus and intentionality in that space?
Yeah.
If there was, anyway, but...
I think it's, I think the data is very student-specific.
Okay.
I don't think we have any, I mean, we don't have anything school-wide.
Okay.
That shows that. Any other questions?
I had a question, thank you for your presentation, that was really good information. Uh, I had a question about enrollment, because I thought last month we were at 112, and now we're at 108, so it looks like we're down former students since last month, so I just didn't know.
Were we at 112 last month? Yeah, yes, we've lost.
Four students?
Yeah.
Okay. And due to, like, moving out charter, or homeschool, or combo?
Uh, it's been charter.
Charter.
And one homeschool.
So the answers to two of those questions you guys had asked. So...
Okay.
The textbook question, um, those purchases were for curriculum associates, so they were I-ready guides, books, and assessments.
Okay.
And the other line, that's an encumbrance that needs to be removed because someone improperly put that there, it's for the, your after-school people, who are out of a different bracket account.
Oh, got it.
So that encumbrance, or I will have the encumbrance of that encumbrance.
Thank you.
Can you, can you say again what, um, the curriculum associates, what, what was that?
So it said, there was a PO for I-ready math books.
Yeah.
I-ready assessment and personalized instruction reading.
Yeah.
And I-ready teacher guides.
Okay.
Is that a different line, Brandon?
I need to check on the reading. We've always had the reading coming out of a different line.
Okay.
So if that needs to be, just let us know.
Yeah, I will, I need to check on that.
Yeah, I think it's just good to know, uh, so we'll be budget for our next year.
Mm-hmm.
Next year's budget, I put it all in one.
Oh, you did?
Uh, for, for a couple of years, we had I-ready reading through Title IV, and it was only over two years. So I, I think this might've been the first year that we've added it into our reading budget. So I, I need to check on that.
But you can add it now under one umbrella, correct?
I'm going to for this...
It's the ease of it.
For the budget I'm working on now for next year, it'll be under one.
Okay.
Alright, do you guys have any other questions on that information? Oh, um, I did have a question about the PTO Fall Festival, is that open to the public too?
Yes.
Just open to the public, okay. Cool. So we have on here our staff handbook review.
Oh, uh, yeah, so we just included those for, I, I don't think it has to be approved.
It's not approved, it's just for, um, yeah, for you to review and see and questions, and it, um, the staff handbook works, um, with HR department and with the student handbook. We do, so yeah, it's for the board to acknowledge.
Thanks, thank you for sending that to us, however, I could not open it. Um, it said I needed to request approval, so I wasn't sure if...
Were you on your SAU 16 email?
I was, yeah.
Then if you request it through your SAU 16 email, you'll get...
Okay. Did you, were you guys able to look at that?
I haven't clicked it yet, but I do have a, I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
The family handbook and the, the staff handbook, the staff have to sign off on that also, correct?
The staff?
The staff handbook, yeah, so they... They're, you're sending us the staff handbook that they're agreeing to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And tends the family also? Do families have to sign off on that?
Uh, families, they don't have to sign off on it.
Okay.
It's just, um, it's part of what we hope they read at the beginning of the year.
Amical agreement. Yes, okay.
And is that sent to them via email?
It's, um, not sent to, no, it's on the website and, and my newsletter. My current family.
Okay, I just remember we used to get the printout.
Yeah.
Oh, those were the days.
Those were the days, exactly, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Uh, just because some of that stuff that's in that family handbook is required that we give to them by law. Um, 'cause it talks about law, specific things, yeah, yeah.
I tried to get the information online, I was denied access.
Yeah.
For what?
For that, for... For both of them, the staff and the family handbook.
Um, it will be posted, um, with the board meeting minutes, they'll be posted. The staff handbook might have redactions, 'cause there's safety protocols and pieces in that that are not public. So we'll have to have, um, we're just gonna comb through it, but it will, they'll be posted on the website. And if the link doesn't work, we'll, we'll fix that.
The family handbook should be, it's, it's up there and anyone with a link.
Did you go through the website?
I went, uh, I cut it off of...
Right, if you go on the website, you'll probably be able to get into the family handbook, because that's gonna ask you for the SAU 16, like, security, because it's linked to our agenda. But if you go to the website, that's gonna be open to the public.
Isn't the website where I got the agenda from?
Yeah, that's what Tiffany's saying, that she couldn't even get in.
Yeah, it, it just wasn't copied and pasted properly, so what will...
What are we doing, wait a week and see what's on there?
No, I think...
No, it's, it's accessible right now on the East Kingston, the EKS, sau16.org website.
Will you, will you email him the link?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll email it to you right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and then I myself, uh, will get the proper link and look at both of those handbooks, and if I have any questions, I'll bring it back next month. Because, like, I just was, I wasn't sure if we were getting copies or if we were gonna have a discussion about it or whatnot.
What's your email?
Uh, WLA and then BRANTING@gmail.
BRANTING?
No, BRANTING.
At Gmail.
I thought you said AOL.
AOL, sorry.
Did you say AOL?
Did you say Gmail or AOL?
Oh, Gmail.
Gmail.
See, I just made that up. Thank you. Here, thanks. Okay, so that solves that, so then you can, um, be able to look at that.
Okay.
Do you guys have any other questions about the handbooks? No? No? Okay. So we have chairs report, so we have the superintendent evaluation, Kirsten.
Yep, um, we've met, uh, twice since our last meeting. I had a meeting right after our board meeting last, last time, last month. And then we also met this past week to secure the superintendent's goals. It was a great conversation. Um, the superintendent was asked to be a little bit more specific about the tangible and the matrix, the metrics that we were asking for. She did that, um, and now the chair will be presenting the goals, um, at our joint board meeting. And we'll be sitting down with the superintendent and the chair of the joint board to, to review that. So, all is good. There's, um, definitely some strategic planning goals involved in that, which is great. And there's also, um, one of the pushes from, um, the superintendent is coaching. And so there were many pieces of what coaching, um, looked like and the tangibles of the people that she is coaching to show growth. Um, so it's building capacity across the entire district, which is, the, the committee was, was pleased with the revised goals. And those will be presented at the joint board. I can wait for my next one, when it's my turn.
Okay, so policy committee. So we were gonna meet in September, but we actually ended up pushing it back till October. So we meet on the 17th at 6:00 p.m. at the SAU conference, uh, room, so no policies. Tonight, the only thing that I did wanna mention, which I think Esther has probably mentioned to, um, and you Renee, is that about Columbus Day.
Yep.
How that was a House bill that was passed and signed by Kristen, you knew, that became law in September, that it is to be recognized as Columbus Day on anything that we do.
These school calendars.
Um, educational institutes, anything that we send out. So I just, where it's coming up on Monday, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we all do, yeah.
We drafted our calendars, um, and it is listed as Columbus Day.
Okay. I just figured I mentioned it.
Yep, thank you.
And, I mean, we might see a few policies where we might have to change maybe one or two, so, um...
You have some policies coming up.
Yeah, we have some policies coming up, yeah, so. So that's all I have for that, safety and security, Paul.
Yep, so, uh, next meeting's gonna be next week on the 17th. I missed the last meeting, so it's gonna be my first meeting as part of the committee. Obviously, if the opportunity comes up, which is interested, we can share an update high level on the home and security audit.
Yep, we'll do that in non-public, yeah.
Do that in non-public, so, uh, I think that's the major update there for station security.
Thanks.
Uh, wellness, um, we did meet, and, um, we were looking at creating a toolbox for each school to have, uh, resources for each of their committees. So each school should have a wellness committee, and then they will receive, um, a toolbox to help with, I guess, PR-ing wellness within their school. Um, we'll meet quarterly. I am, I think I, I said this, I am the parent representative for the committee, because we have, um, two other school board members, so, um, when I go to those meetings, I am not going as a school board rep, I am going as a parent rep. Just FYI.
Alright, strategic planning, Paul.
Yep, um, first meeting of the year is coming up later this month. That'll be on Thursday, October 24th, so nothing to look for yet. Obviously, coming out of that first session, um, we should have some updates to share back.
Nice. And will that meeting take place at the SAU office too?
I believe so, I'd have to look back and see specifically where the location is. Yes, the SAU conference room.
SAU conference room, okay. And what time is that? Is that 6:00, 5:30?
These meetings are at 5:30 to 6:30.
Alright, so goal updates. Goal number one, uh, I don't really have anything to add to my goal. I'm just excited to see how the school year is going next month. Kirsten.
Um, community engagement, we met, um, on September 30th. There were four of us there, Brandon? Five of us? Five, four, five, five, me too, five. Just good, it was a good conversation, we reviewed some of the things we worked, looked at last, um, last year. Certainly, we looked at the, um, King Fisher Community Park and that situation. Still looking to have, um, someone get back there and clean up, um, the space a little bit, so we can start planning. Um, Brandon talked about that, I think, at our last meeting. We had some ideas about how we might, um, help with those costs. Um, one of the teachers is going to go speak with, uh, PTO. Thursday, yep, so that's great. We also talked about using the library as more of a community engagement hub. And our director of library was very open to that. So we're going to have our next, next meeting in January?
January.
Yeah. So we'll have, we'll have information about moving forward. I'm going to continue to keep posting my, you know, lovely signs that I make at the library just to get them out there. And the director of library said that there were four or five retired teachers who were looking to engage in some type of opportunity. So I'm hoping to work with Zoe on that and see what we can come up with. We also, I want to, I thanked her for having a pretty large group of kiddos coming in every day because we did lose our after-school program from the Y M C A. And so she has taken that on. I think she always has. I just think the Y was able to supplement that. But now without it, she seems to have a crew in there. So that's quite remarkable on her end, so all good. Anything else, Brandon?
Capital improvement update. So taking a look at the list of things that we had earmarked over the last couple of years for the multi-year capital improvement plan. Just kind of reevaluating that based on what we've completed to date and sort of what we want to prioritize that still remains on that list or what we need to add to that list based on things that we have been discussing since the school year started, so. Few things there that we're considering. I think, you know, the, the fence that we do want to move on that side of the school in a couple of feet. And then some of the things that I think might fall more under the home and security plan. So we'll discuss them.
And Brandon worked to speak to the director of facilities at the S A U. They'll do the whole building, facility audit, which as soon as that is done, we'll give that to Paul. We have another meeting. It's just going through and doing like an inspection of the building with all the trades. So if we wanted to, like, they might say this, you got another five years on this piece of equipment or that, so that then.
It's planning.
It's planning. So when we, we met with Paul, that was one of the things.
Right.
He asked us to do, and I know Brandon's worked on scheduling that, so I'll have that.
Thank you, thank you, Kirsten. All right, so new business, new new business. I don't think we have any new business. Old business.
Six oh three.
Old business?
Six oh three.
Oh.
So public.
Yes, public comment is now ended. That went by fast. Let's see. So nothing for old business, right? I don't have anything. Okay, so. We go into, I'd like to make a motion to go into a non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three C and I. Do I have a second?
My second.
All right, so we need our roll call vote. Tiffany?
Kirsten?
Paul?
All right, so we are in non-public. So at seven eleven, we are now out of non-public. I'd like to make a motion to expend up to sixty thousand